Good evening. We'll go ahead and call to order the County Planning Commission for February 5, 2024. If you'll please call the roll.
Certainly. Commissioners Borja.
Here.
Conklin.
Here.
Corona Sabanano. Devlin.
Here.
And Chair Rathal.
Here.
And we do have our quorum.
Thank you so much. If you'll please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if you'll please make the announcements for this evening.
I certainly will. The county fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. To make a public comment, please complete a speaker request form and add it to the clerk. That would be me. And the chairperson will call your name when it's your turn to make a comment. To make a teleconference public comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom by pressing star nine, and the clerk will unmute you so that you may make a comment during the public comment portion of the meeting. The time limit as set by the chair, which is.
Two minutes?
Two minutes, thank you, will be the same as in-person comments. You may also send a written comment to boardclerk@setcounty.gov, and your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record.
All right. Before we move on to our agenda this evening, I'd just like to welcome Damon Conklin to the commission. Thanks for being here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I really appreciate the warm welcome and very truly grateful for county staff for their time that they've spent helping me onboard. Really appreciate it.
Excellent. We'll dive right into the contested portion of the agenda. Please call item number one.
So for your item number one this evening is a zoning ordinance amendment and administrative amendments. The applicant is the County of Sacramento, Division of Planning and Environmental Review, and let's see, the environmental document is an addendum.
If you could start the presentation first.
Metro, can you please start the presentation? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Lauren Haas, Associate Planner with Planning and Environmental Review. This item is a zoning ordinance amendment to the Sacramento County zoning code related to supportive and transitional housing and other group living uses. The proposed amendments would change chapters three and seven of the zoning code. The project is funded by a 2019 local early action planning grant that Planning and Environmental Review received from the California Department of Housing and Community Development. The purpose of the grant is to aid local jurisdictions in preparing and adopting planning documents and processes that accelerate housing production. So all of the topic areas within the package are related to housing and making the permitting and development of housing more streamlined and simpler. So there are three topic areas of the amendment. The remainder of the presentation will be going through the amendment areas, where I'll discuss the background of why the changes to the zoning code are needed, what limitations state law has placed on local jurisdictions, if there are any, and what amendments are being proposed. The first topic area is required legislative updates from the state of California related to transitional and supportive housing. So California's state law requires that local jurisdictions treat transitional housing and supportive housing as residential uses, and that we only restrict them how other residential uses of the same type are restricted in the same zoning districts. So this means that transitional and supportive housing, which are defined on the next slide, cannot have any additional permitting requirements or regulations except as mandated in state law. That would not otherwise be required for housing of other types in the same zone. For example, the zoning code would allow a five-bedroom, single-family house in the Residential Five zoning district by right. So per state law, we must also allow transitional housing or supportive housing in a five-bedroom, single-family home in the Residential Five zone. The definitions of transitional and supportive housing being proposed in the zoning code derive from state law. The main difference between transitional and supportive housing is that supportive housing has no limit on the length of stay, whereas transitional housing must be at least six months long and must have a predetermined end date. Supportive housing is also linked to on- or off-site services and is reserved for a specified target population, which is defined in state law as persons with low income who have one or more disabilities. And to reiterate, state law requires that these two housing types be treated just as all other residential uses are treated in terms of permitting requirements and restrictions. So wherever residential uses are permitted and conditionally permitted, supportive housing and transitional housing must also be permitted and conditionally permitted. So additionally, transitional and supportive housing cannot have any limitations on capacity or separation or over-concentration requirements because we do not regulate residential uses in that way. So that's important to note. So staff is proposing to implement these state requirements through the addition of a new use category for transitional housing and supportive housing lumped together, which would reference all of the potential entitlement requirements based on the housing type used for each zoning district. The changes are proposed this way because the entitlement required is not based on the type of population served, so like a blood-related family versus a foster care home versus supportive housing, but rather it's based on the style or type of housing used and the zoning district for which the use is proposed. So for example, a single-family home in the business professional zone requires a minor use permit, but a 15-unit apartment complex in the BP, in the business professional zone, requires a conditional use permit by the zoning administrator. So this new use category, supportive and transitional housing, says UPM/UPZ in the business professional zone, to indicate that the entitlement type depends not only on the zone district, but also on the type of housing that's proposed for the use. And that is further clarified in the use standards that are associated with the use category. So the second amendment topic is the restructuring of existing supportive and group living uses. There are several supportive and group living use categories that have existed in the zoning code for many years without being updated, and they no longer adequately describe the facilities that they're meant to. The use categories and associated definitions contain outdated terminology, are not reflective of the populations that they reference, and they're not allowing for effective categorization by the planning department and by code enforcement during rental housing inspections. And so the desired outcome of this amendment, or this portion of the amendment, is that, is to improve classification of facilities into the existing use categories, to increase enforcement of problematic boarding houses, and to update this outdated terminology and sometimes redundant terminology in the zoning code. The purpose of the amendment is not to change the entitlement requirements for these existing use categories. So this table provides a summary of the changes proposed to address these ongoing issues. The definition of boarding house would be amended to specify that each bedroom in a boarding house is rented independently of one another through separate lease agreements. This differs from the family and single household definition, which has one lease. So that includes groups like roommates on a single lease, for example, a group of college students living together under one lease. That would still be considered a family per the zoning code. The residential care home definition would be modified to help differentiate this use category from the boarding house use category because residential care homes are permitted at much larger sizes and in many zoning districts. Medically assisted withdrawal, aka detox services, is being added to the zoning code. Currently, this activity is not described anywhere in the zoning code, so staff has ongoing issues with how to categorize the use. Besides the allowance for detox in single-family homes with six or fewer people, which is allowed by the state, medically assisted withdrawal would, per this zoning code amendment, would only be permitted in conditionally permitted institutional uses. So there are no other places where the detox facilities would be permitted outright. And lastly, the word "social" is being removed from the social rehabilitation center name, and the definition is being updated, and the psychiatric facility name is being changed to behavioral health center, to mirror vocabulary that is used by industry professionals. A new use category is being proposed for a type of small-scale shelter that the county has seen arise in the last several years that is not addressed in the zoning code. We've worked with the Department of Homeless Services and Housing, who oversees some of these programs, that offers the shelters to develop this definition. These small-scale shelters are an alternative to the traditional large-scale emergency shelter. They are scattered throughout the county, typically in single-family dwellings with five to six clients. Clients of the shelter are assigned through a placement process, have supportive services, and have regular contact with and oversight from program staff. It's important to note that clients do not have leases and do not gain tenancy while participating in this program. New use standards for this use include occupancy limits of two people per bedroom and a parking requirement of one space per three clients. And the last topic area is farmworker housing. During the review of the 2021 to 2029 housing element, the California Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, recommended that planning look into whether there was a need for expanded farmworker housing. Staff reviewed and ensured that the zoning code's farmworker housing ordinance complied with state requirements, and then conducted outreach to the community planning advisory councils to discuss farmworker housing needs and suggested changes to the ordinance. After these outreach efforts, staff also attended the agricultural advisory committee meeting and got feedback from that committee and finally drafted some proposed amendments for the farmworker housing ordinance. Proposed use standards for farmworker housing that have been developed will require operational information prior to farmworker housing being built. This information will include the type of dwelling that's proposed, for example, barracks versus single-family style housing, the number of dwellings proposed, and lastly, a deed restriction that requires that the housing be used for farmworkers only and not be converted to housing for another population. There are also new requirements for parking and non-habitable structures and just some more details about what can happen on a farmworker housing site. Oh, one other thing. A farmworker definition has been developed that didn't previously exist in the zoning code, so we're adding that to chapter seven as part of this proposal. The definition was developed based on research into other municipalities' definitions and collaboration with the agricultural advisory committee and the agricultural commissioner. So lastly, staff recommends that the planning commission recommend to the Board of Supervisors, the final hearing body, that they determine that the previously certified county general plan's final environmental impact report with the CEQA addendum is adequate and complete, and that they approve the ordinance amending chapters three and seven of the Sacramento County zoning code. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haas. Questions for staff this evening? Anyone want to start us off? All right. Looks like I'll kick us off. Did you have a question?
Well, I guess, thank you, first of all, for a very thorough staff report and a great presentation. As I kind of look through, I guess, or look at the, I think, the challenges that you're seeking to, I think, address within the update. And maybe there isn't, like, a clear answer to this, but like, did questions of concentration kind of ever come up within some of the, you know, moving some of these services into more easily in the neighborhoods?
Are you speaking to the supportive and transitional housing?
Yeah.
So we can't really look at concentration because we don't look at concentration of any other housing type. So there really is no mechanism for us unless we started looking at concentration for other residential uses.
Okay. Easy enough.
Yeah.
Did you get your question answered?
I did.
Anyone else before I dive in with my list? All right. First off, you know, I appreciate, I do appreciate the amount of thought that has gone into this amendment and the feedback that you guys have taken throughout the process. So with that being said, my issue is more with state law than it is with you guys' interpretation of state law. So bear with me as I run down some traps here. Did you guys look into adding restrictions on single-family housing? I know you, if I understood the staff report correctly, it said, well, we can only have one kitchen in a single-family unit. So that's what we're going to use in order to keep from 96 people moving in as transitional or supportive housing in a single-family residence, which would probably upset the neighbors. I'm just curious, what other jurisdictions did you look at? Is there anyone else putting a total restrictive number on amount of residents in a house, per bedroom, number of vehicles onsite? What are other jurisdictions doing? And are there others that are restricting single-family housing because of this heavy-handed state law?
I'll go ahead. So I don't believe, and I'm going to double-check with Lauren, that we looked at other jurisdictions because we started with our county council. And we had many conversations with our county council about, Bill is not our county council, he's your county council. So we had conversations with our county council about this. And whether or not we could, and that would be a policy decision for the board, so it is potentially possible that when we bring this item before the board, that they may want us to explore that further. Years ago, we did have some restrictions on larger single-family homes. We used to have a provision that homes that wanted to have five or more bedrooms needed a minor use permit. The interesting nuance with that was it didn't apply to homes that were initially built that way. It was more if they wanted to expand. And that was because we were trying to capture the legal boarding houses that we were having an issue with. And it seemed that it wasn't successful in deterring the bad actors because they were not coming forward for building permits to convert portions of homes into numerous bedrooms to rent out. And so it was really being prohibitive to those folks who really just wanted to have a larger, single-family home. And so a couple of years ago, the board got rid of that provision. But that would be something that they could consider in the future as a way to address this new state legislation.
And I might just add that, in general, a local jurisdiction can't really put a restriction on the number of people that reside in a single-family home or even a multifamily. That gets into constitutional issues, freedom of association. You really have to do it through more structural restrictions, like the number of rooms, the amount of parking, yeah, the size of the building. And then in terms of code enforcement, you get at it that way. If, I mean, you could have 15 people in a house, but they could be very quiet. And if they get out of line, then that's when code enforcement comes in and you rely on them. But since this law requires us to treat transitional housing and supportive housing the same as single-family residential, then we can't have the same kinds. We can't just say, you know, max six people in a house.
Yeah, I understand that. I guess I was looking for more of, you know, an X number of people per bedroom, right, or X number of people per parking spot, you know? That seems like a better way to go about it from my standpoint.
Well, I saw the boarding, the boarding house, you've got that restriction in there. And I think that maybe it's because it's more of a commercial enterprise. So maybe there's, there's some exceptions where that can be done.
Correct. And we, we looked at that because other jurisdictions had used that. We also used that same provision for our short-term rentals because those types of uses are more of a lodging type of use than a single-family use. Those folks are not operating as a household, which we're being told by state law that the supportive and transitional housing must be treated like a single-family household.
Can I maybe fault your question?
Sure.
So again, I, you know, I'm empathetic to, I think, you know, the, what the state law is attempting to do here and the, were response to it. But to my colleague's point, maybe are there other mechanisms that are in place? I mean, this is, seems like a very well-intended outcome, right, of addressing multiple challenges in various levels. But, you know, often, the best intentions often go awry. So are there other kind of mechanisms, whether it be like code enforcement, maybe it's around the parking, or, I'm just trying to think of like, when too much kind of appears in a neighborhood and it's like, well, that's, that's just the state law. Are there other kind of blankets there, safety checks, I guess, that the neighborhood might be able to rely on? I've now got 20 cars. My neighbor has 20 cars in front of his house. It's awesome.
So I think you touched on a good point there. Unless the board moves to a process where in some manner they're legally able to restrict the number of vehicles that a household can have or something of that nature, I'm not sure we can go there. I'm not sure, Bill, if you're aware of building code or any other provisions that would.
You, I mean, the simple rule is you can't regulate the type of people who are in the house. So it's got to be what they're doing. And it could be, it could be an actual and actual family that's too loud or has too many cars or has junk and rubbish in the front yard. Whatever those, you know, behaviors are or the nuisance violations, that's what you have to address. And the nuisance code is full of things like that. So there's all kinds of rules about, you know, noise and, and the property not looking a certain way, even lawns getting too overgrown, that kind of stuff. All of that's at our disposal for, you know, any of these kinds of uses. Thank you. Again, my concern isn't the use. It's, you know, when your neighbor goes from having four people to 14 people or whatever that number is, it can, you know, maybe, and now there's maybe a couple on your street. I mean, that's when my concerns, I think, start to arise. And like, how do you, how do you, how do you balance the needs of like the folks that live there with the challenges that we're seeking to address within our broader community? And the issue is, what are those 14 people doing that's creating a problem? Well, I mean. So the existence of 14 people in the, in the house is in and of itself not a, not a legal issue? Yeah, it may be absolutely nothing.
Yeah, it seems like our hands are relatively tied here, but I do think it bears highlighting, highlighting to the board when it's brought there for their discussion. That's my only, you know, recommendation today on that point is, is just to, to make sure, you know, you know, I guess I'll put it on the record, I would be supportive of restrictions on single-family houses in a person's per bedroom or vehicles per bedroom sort of approach to minimize the nuisance impacts that this could have. And my particular concern is in single-family. You know, when we go up to multifamily, they're, they're more able to handle that, and they're more designed for it. It's more of an engineering approach. Yes. Okay. We're going to take a quick recess while we deal with some technical issues. Sorry if I. Thank you for your patience. And did we have anyone that was online for public comment?
We do. And I, this is Lydie with the clerk of the board's office, and I would like to reiterate and I apologize the new procedures with regard to telephonic public comments, which are actually on the agenda. So on today, you would dial 916-875-2500 to make a verbal public comment, follow the prompts for instructions, and refer to the agenda and listen to the live meeting to determine when the best time is to call, to call to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item. Callers may be on hold for up to an extended period of time and should plan accordingly. When the chairperson opens, chairperson opens a public comment for a specific agenda item or off agenda matter, callers will be transferred from the queue into the meeting to make a verbal comment. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item. So again, members of the public, to make a public comment, please dial 916-875-2500. No public comments will be made via the Zoom meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, back to staff questions. I got one on ancillary uses. I know I've been caught out from this before. And just want to kind of clarify and make sure if we're dealing with a congregate care facility or supportive housing, is there a way to where a congregate care facility could say, well, the ancillary use of drug detox is just in that 25% of the congregate care facility? So my original definition of what I am is still congregate care facility, or as soon as we start going down that road of drug detox, it moves it to convalescent hospital. And I'm just, I know I've been caught out by this. Well, as long as they're 75% compatible with their use, then there's like this bucket over here I can use to do whatever else I want. And I just want to make sure I'm clear.
That is a very interesting question. I'm trying to think of some different scenarios. I would assume that if it was a congregate care facility or a larger facility, there would be a use permit. So we would definitely be looking to the use permit and kind of what it called out as the uses and the services. And in most cases, if it wasn't clear, we would put them through a substantial compliance determination to try to, try to see if we could deem it substantially compliant or not. But it also sounds like you're asking if it's something that would be allowed by right? So like, if they didn't have a use permit or if they just, I guess, can you give me a little bit more information, Chair Rathal?
I just know we've, we've run into this before where we have a hard time, and I can't find it in our code, but that ancillary uses are allowed for commercial establishments, right? Or even residential homes. Like, I can have this ancillary use up to, up to 25% is what.
Oh, okay.
It's not, it's not ringing a bell for me, the percentage criteria. What, your question makes. your question makes, makes me think about is the, the standard for six or more for detox or medical withdrawal facility. So by right, I guess in your hypothetical, if it's a, I don't know if it's a social, not social, rehabilitation center, they can still have up to six patients for detox, I think, just by right. And that goes back to, you know, the state law requirements that we have to abide by. But any more than that, it would require a use permit for that additional use or ancillary use.
But we...
I believe in the scenario you're talking about, Bill, though, it would be cumulative total, though, right? Because the way I've reading the one section of state law, and I think I had it here, was that licensed facilities over six, the local jurisdictions can require a use permit and have rules about how they operate. So we would be looking at the cumulative total number of patients, not the different categories they were in. So for example, I don't think someone could come in and say, I'm gonna do six people as assisted living, six people as detox, six people as, as something else. I think it would be cumulative because that's how we've been interpreting our code to date. And I think that's, I, I, we can definitely follow up, but that's not how I'm reading the code is, is that it's not, that they can't parse out each of those groups as a standalone number. It's the total number of residents.
Okay.
And I do want to point out, in the congregate care facility definition, we're proposing to add, if, well, it's a sentence that's already in there and we're revising it to add, "If the facility offers more intensive medical care as licensed by the state of California, including but not limited to extensive skilled nursing services, medical care, or medically assisted withdrawal services, then the facility is defined as a convalescent hospital or rehabilitation center, or if residential in character." And it goes on to list other categories. So we do allow, you're correct that ancillary uses are often permitted with primary uses. But in certain cases, we do say, we do specifically call out in a definition, if you're doing this use, you actually fall under something else. And so in the congregate care definition, we've done that.
That's the answer I wanted to hear. Perfect. I want to make sure that it's not, well, it's allowed if it's in this ancillary use over here, so.
Yeah, so for detox, we've clarified that.
And we can work with our council if we need to tighten that up a little bit to make it clear that you don't get like a 25% or some sort of ancillary amount of people in that congregate care as...
And then my, my next question is on the scattered shelters. And I know it's been broken down into 10 or, nine or less or 10 or more residents. And it looks like there's a minor use permit for 10 or more residents. And just kind of curious on the thought process of a minor use permit versus maybe a higher level of use permit. And once again, my concern is mainly in the, in the RD1 zone. Seems like a scattered shelter with 10 or more residents should have a pretty darn high standard. And a minor use permit just doesn't seem that way. And I was curious, what, what, is there something in here I'm missing as far as how the staff would analyze that minor use permit and decide that a scattered shelter with 10 or more residents would be unacceptable in that, one of those zones? Is there clear, clear, you know, evaluations of that?
Yeah, when we were considering what the sort of larger scattered shelters should, how they should be addressed, firstly, we, when we were working with the Department of Homeless Services and Housing, they, who oversees most of these, they let us know that they almost never have sites that are over that size. They typically look for single-family homes that are four to five bedrooms, and they prefer to keep the bedrooms to one or two people max. They start to, they start to see sort of personality issues and just conflict when they get larger than that. So that's why, up to that size, we have it permitted by right. And then beyond that, we, we kept it at a staff level just because we decided that the analysis would probably be pretty simple with mainly parking as the concern that we thought would come up, as something that we would be concerned with for a land use issue. Otherwise, they're overseen by a program that's often involved with the county. And besides that, there, there wasn't much we thought that the, that the planning department would look at in terms of land use. But, you know, we can consider a higher level of entitlement if you feel like the, you know, the, it should go to a hearing body instead.
And then just to add on to that, the parking would be more related to their caseworkers and stuff like that. The folks that live there are not allowed, they're not considered residents, so they're not even provided with keys to the home. They, they are clients, so they aren't on the lease. They don't have vehicles that can be there. And so on like something like a boarding house or something like that, we, we felt like the amount of traffic would still be pretty small, even at the, the larger ones, because it would be more of their caseworkers maybe coming to visit them, folks coming to take them to doctor's appointments or other supportive services that they may need.
And there's nothing in state law that requires us to permit a scattered shelter that's 10-plus residents?
No, this is actually our way of probably legitimizing a practice that we've been doing, I want to say, probably close to six years now. We started this program as a way to address homelessness. We had been informally classifying them as the six or fewer, so they worked really hard at making sure that none of the sites they were renting had more than six clients at them. But at times, they are able to get, as Lauren mentioned, a four or five-bedroom home. So it would be nice to have a, a slightly larger number of, of folks. But for the most part, they do try to keep them more on the smaller scale. But this would just allow them the opportunity, if there was a site with more bedrooms, to still move forward with that in lieu of your traditional barrack-style emergency shelters.
Okay, I'll leave that one for, for discussion. That's all my questions on that. My last one is just kind of curiosity. It sounds like we've, we've allowed, or we are allowing a lot of, I guess, leniency as far as putting one or two people in, in every bedroom in houses. Do we have any fraternity or sorority houses that are within the county? These look still pretty restricted in the use tables. And since we're saying, hey, boarding houses are great, residential care homes are great, let's scatter shelters are great, but gosh, let's keep these restrictions on this fraternity and sorority houses. Just kind of caught my eye with looking at their use tables. And I didn't know if there's anything even out there in the county that would, is, is there any county fraternity or sorority houses on the records?
I am not aware of any offhand. Most of the ones are within the city limits of Sacramento, closer to, you know, the university. So we have not really addressed that because we haven't received many inquiries on it. We have received some inquiries on some interesting nuanced employee housing, but decided that they were really operating more like a boarding house.
Okay, just curious. I'll leave it alone. But I, as long as we're updating code, you know, I look at these and go, oh, this is a, this is a very similar use to all of the other things we're talking about. And considering this is a grant from 2019 that we're discussing in 2024, I do like to do as much code cleanup as possible. And so if there's nothing else that we would expect from a fraternity or sorority house that would be different than these other five uses we talk about, maybe, maybe we clean it up at the same time. Any other questions for staff?
Just one, one quick question. How many, how many projects have we already classified in the last few years since we were working on this that would fall under the farmworker housing? Is it, is it popular? Is it prevalent? Has it been used a lot?
No, it has not. And that was one of the reasons, one of the things that we kept being asked when we went to the community planning advisory councils was, why was HCD asking us to look at this? Farmworker housing in our area is not as commonly migrant farmworker as it is in other areas. So a lot of times, our farmworkers are working year-round, either in a, in a variety of industries or in agriculture and are living in, you know, traditional apartments and homes through, throughout the county and city. We do have a lot of older farmworker camps that Environmental Management Department still inspects on a regular basis. We have had some issues with some of those converting to other uses in some areas when they're no longer being used for farmworker housing. And so that's one of the reasons, based on comments we received from some of the members of the public and CPAC, to put the deed restriction on there that if farmworker housing is built, that it needs to be used just for that and then legally turned into something else and...
Okay, thank you.
All right, I think we'll go ahead and move on to public comment. Oh, yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
You know, I don't recall exactly what jurisdictions we looked at. We typically look at, I mean, it sort of depends on what we're looking at. So for farmworker housing, we looked at more rural jurisdictions. So we look regionally at the jurisdictions, that's the county jurisdictions that surround us. And we, and we actually added the, the 24-hour on average addition to the definition to account for the fact that farmworker housing is not always like a 40-hour-a-week job. Sometimes weather can impact it. And we wanted to make sure that we weren't ruling out legitimate farmworkers that aren't always gonna meet the, the 40-hour-a-week requirement. So the 24-hour work week is supposed to be like a part-time job. And we wanted to make sure we were capturing even part-time farmworkers. And Wendy's reminding me that we, I believe the Placer and El Dorado County definitions are very similar to ours. And after we, so we, we developed this definition with the Agricultural Advisory Committee. And then after we refined it, we sent it back to them for review and they all felt comfortable with the way it was written. They, they wanted to make sure, let's see. Yeah, so we have, we have this "as determined by the agricultural commissioner" blurb in the definition, so that if there's any sort of nuance to what the activities are, we can lean on them to get guidance on what would constitute a farmworker. And so, yeah, that's sort of how we came about the definition.
All right, we'll move on to public comment.
And there are no public comments for item number one.
Thank you. All right, this moves us to deliberation. Anything, I asked a lot of questions to start out, but any of that resonate with you guys? Any changes that you want to see as this moves through the process?
I think we've got a lot of, kind of, we're bordered here by a lot of state law. And I would also recognize this is a very complex issue. And the solutions to it aren't going to be a silver bullet to addressing any of these needs. And so, like, to thank staff for what I thought was a pretty thorough staff report overall. And I'm ready to, to move when deliberations are over.
Yeah, if I could make just a quick comment.
Sure.
I want to echo my colleague's praise of the analysis, very well-vetted. I know that, or at least my, my understanding is that there is very little flexibility for deviation from the state law with regard to the supportive housing ordinances and restrictions. And I believe that some of the punitive damages or punitive tools from HCD, if they find that an ordinance is discriminatory, is, you know, loss of funds for housing and even unleashing the Attorney General's Office for litigation, which obviously no jurisdiction wants. That being said, I do want to echo similar concerns that's been raised here at the DIAUS about some of the often rowdy characteristics or behaviors that can sometimes befall a, a treatment or supportive housing, especially when they're clustered and a lot of the residents find that they look to the left, look to the right, and across the street. And there might be homes all around them, which disproportionately have more electricity use, extra water, waste, laundry services, things of the nature that could even triple up into industrial, commercial capacity, which would adversely impact that community and that neighborhood. So with that being said, I, I do want to just at least echo and underscore the, the concerns that have been raised before. And, and thank you very much for highlighting them in the analysis.
Commissioner Moha, anything to add?
Nothing to add. I'm ready to, to vote when we're done with deliberations.
Sounds good. The only thing I want to just bring up and get you guys' thoughts on is the scattered shelter, more than 10 residents in an RD1 or 2 zone. Everybody comfortable saying that's a minor use permit? To me, I would raise the bar.
And what would, what would you put it to, ZA?
Either ZA or, or Planning Commission. Just, I just think 10 residents, it's actually 11 or higher, right? 10 or fewer is going to be permitted by right with this change, so.
So to staff, it would currently, what is, is, what is referred to as an over-the-counter permit? There's no, there's no need to go before a zoning here administrator for that?
So a minor use permit is still a discretionary action. So there's findings in our zoning code that need to be made. It is subject to SEQA. So Julie Staff does write an environmental document for us. There is neighbor notification, but there is no public hearing. Do you recall the price? It's 2,000-something?
I think it's 1,300.
For a minor use permit. A zoning administrative hearing is required to go to the local planning advisory council or the CPAC, as well as the public hearing. That's more in the range of around $9,000. Plus, it's discretionary, so it's also subject to, to design review. And then Planning Commission is closer to 15,000. The timeline for those two also changes drastically. So a minor use permit is usually processed within two to three months, sometimes a little bit longer if their application is, got some issues with it. Zoning administration's about six to eight months. Planning Commission, it takes typically about 10 months, depending, maybe longer, depending on the level of environmental review.
And are there typically conditions placed on, or at least the ability to place conditions on those?
Correct. On all, on all three levels, we can place... Correct, on all, on all three levels, we can place conditions, all three levels. Do you have findings that are codified in the, in the zoning code for, for approval? I probably should make note that in the instance where it is a county entity that is operating the facility, and it's something that's brought forward to the board through a public hearing process, either through a contract or funding or some other mechanism that they're going through, they can get a waiver of the conditional use permit requirement. So this would be more of an impact for any private entity that is wanting to operate one of these types of facilities.
Yeah, and I guess I'd be more comfortable with a minor use permit if I knew what standards we were evaluating them against. Can you give a little more clarity on?
Yeah, so we would, we would look at neighborhood compatibility. We would look at parking, so we'd want information on, you know, the, the level of service that the folks living there need, and how many, you know, how frequent trips and stuff would be, and is the parking on the site. So it would be very site-specific. You could have a site, you know, that has a three, three-car garage and a long driveway, and, you know, all the parking could be handled on-site versus maybe a different site that would have much different impact if it's only, you know, a one-car garage and single-car driveway. So we would be looking at site-specific impacts related to, to parking. We would look at stuff, do they have adequate area for, you know, trash to be handled?
It has proximity to other scattered shelters in that list?
That is something that we could probably look at. We would only know about the large-scale ones, since anything that was permitted by right, just like small-scale residential care homes. We, we do not know where those are located unless the entity licensing them, or in this case, the county who's contracting with those services told us where they were.
Okay.
Quick question.
Sure.
Under those considerations, would fire be involved as far as inspection?
So when we have a discretionary entitlement, we do distribute out to a standardized list of both internal and external land use agencies. So they go out to our transportation departments, fire, building, EMD, who am I missing? Sheriff, yeah. So they're on our standardized list of, of folks. And I also believe minor use permits typically go through project review committee as well, don't they? That's the one I'm not sure about. I know they don't always have to go through CPACs, but they do get distributed out to other, other departments. We use the minor use permit process for a variety of uses, including smoke shops, car, no, car washes are Planning Commission. I'm looking to you, Lauren.
Thrift stores, right?
Oh, yeah, thrift, yeah, thrift stores, pawn shops, smoke shops, massage.
It used to be our over-five-bedroom review process.
Yeah, I don't see much in the residential. I don't see anything else in the resident, in RD1 or RD2 that's a minor use process.
Yeah.
But I don't have, I don't have any issue with it as long as we are taking into account that we're not going to locate, you know, six of these on the same street. So I can, I can get on board.
So maybe look at a concentration, sorry, concentration requirement, or at least let the board know that that was a concern?
Yeah, I think concentration is definitely, definitely on there when we're talking about houses with 11-plus residents.
I think to Chair, because these are, the folks have to qualify through a placement process, at least from my understanding of DSH, that perhaps there's already like a level of mitigation at the Department of Homelessness or Services that would hopefully prevent that over-concentration as your concern. So I still feel comfortable moving, moving forward, but, but thank you for bringing that up.
Sure. I just don't want it to be another five years before we review it again, you know, if we have issues with it. So cautious on making changes that may impact our neighborhoods. So thanks for going through that with me. All right, and my only, yeah, my only other thought is, is that it's really a board decision, but looking at restricting single-family housing, I think it's a discussion that's really best at their level. I don't have any issue moving it forward. But if we're going to have this, you know, rammed down from state law, you know, do we want, do we want to preempt any issues by saying, hey, we're going to have, you know, X number of cars allowed per bedroom, or X number of residents per bedroom? But that's, I'll leave that up to the board. And I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I would recommend that we adopt the staff recommendation and move the item. Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Further discussion?
I would just, I think, echo a lot of what you said, and to the extent that staff can come up with, or at least look at maybe some standardized kind of conditions for those types of uses, and making sure that we at least have the ability to kind of claw that use back if it really becomes potentially problematic in neighborhoods, so.
Any other discussion or comments? All right, how will you please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioners Borha.
Yes.
Conklin.
Aye.
Corona Salvagnano. Devlin.
Yes.
And Raythal.
Yes.
And the motion carries with all members present.
Thank you. That concludes item number one, and we'll move on to item number two. Ms. Hartman, do you have a report this evening?
I do. I received information from current planning. So the first thing I'm going to go through are the upcoming commission hearings. So the next hearing is February 26th. I wanted to remind all of you that it's an alternative hearing date, since the regular meeting on the 19th was on a county holiday, Washington's birthday. For the 26th, we have one non-contested item, Sunny Slope Wireless. And then we have a few contested items, Mather South LLM, Aspen 3 South, which is a use permit for a mining project, and Arkmont, Arco, I'm sorry, Arco at Larchmont Village. And then the Jesuit High School lighting item has been moved to March 4th, and currently that's the only item on March 4th. So those are your upcoming, I'm sorry? Oh, Jessica gave me March 4th, and it's the 11th?
I got the 11th on my calendar, yeah.
It's the 11th.
It's the 11th?
Uh-huh.
Okay, so March 11th. Please don't show up on March 4th. All right. And then I believe at one of your prior meetings, you asked for an update on what is going on with 7104 Santa Juanita. I don't know if, based on the last update, that you were aware that on December 5th, the Planning and Environmental Review Department did issue a determination on their substantial compliance request, that their requested changes to the site were not consistent with the prior use permit, and an amendment would be needed. Since they have received that determination from county staff, they have not appealed the decision. They have since hired a new architect to work with them. That architect has met and has had a few communications with current planning staff. And it sounds like the new objective of the property owner is to work towards being consistent with the approved use permits and exhibit, rather than doing anything that would require a use permit amendment at this time. We also followed up with site improvements and permits, which is SIPs, regarding grading. They have no permit on file for the grading activities or improvements that were done to the site. Two letters have gone out notifying the property owner of the grading violation, and the next letter will be coming, will be being sent out through county council. So I'm assuming that means that there might be fines associated with that. With building permits and inspections, they have submitted permits for the smaller building on the site and the large one in the back. And so they started that process, but it looks like they have since canceled the permits and need to resubmit for work that was done to some of those structures.
Thank you.
And that is it for my report back.
Sounds good. Miscellaneous scheduling items, or do we cover those too? I don't know why it's split up on this agenda, but I think you covered them all.
I covered them all, I'm sorry.
All right, we'll move to public comments.
Okay, and we do have someone in the phone comment queue. Tamika, can you please send the caller through? I'm sorry, caller, can you bear with us just one moment, please? And can you turn down the, your volume just a little bit? Perfect. Please proceed.
...was indicating that the new owners are planning to put an Alzheimer's home in there for 50 beds, that that's their current plan, not to say that that won't change. But is that what they're saying that they're planning on doing now? Because I'm one of the neighbors that has many concerns about a rehabilitation or whatever supportive living center. Thank you very much.
Thank you, caller. And that concludes your public comments.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And can I ask staff to reach out to that concerned resident on Santa Juanita?
We can. I'm not aware that they have indicated what population they're going to serve, and we can't regulate based on population as previously discussed.
But the existing use permit has a cap of the population?
Correct, it has a 50-bed.
It has a 50, 50-bed?
It does, mm-hmm. It's currently for 50 beds.
Perfect. Well, I think that answers the question, so. All right, any other public comments this evening?
No, there are none.
Sounds good. With that, we'll go ahead and adjourn at 6:51. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, take care.